Good evening. I have recalled to order the discussion meeting of the Mount Lebanon Board of School Directors. It's Monday, September ninth, 2024, at 7:56 PM. We had a policy meeting right beforehand that went long, so I apologize for the delay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Crable?
Here.
Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Ms. Fleischer?
Here.
Mrs. Gelman?
Here.
Mrs. Gensel?
Here.
Ms. Guth?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Wyland?
Here.
First up on the agenda tonight is one of our pre-scheduled monthly presentations where Dr. Fries will present on Libo United, which is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Working Group for the District.
Thank you, Mrs. Fleischer. We're going to go ahead and pull that presentation up. As we shared at our August meeting, each meeting, both discussion and regular meeting, we will be doing a presentation to the board on various topics related to school district function. So our first one is Libo United. Last year, as many of you may know, you learned that this is a working group that we initiated in the fall of last year related to our work in the area of equity and inclusion. Here, you'll see our mission and our vision. Our mission is that the Mount Lebanon School District is committed to providing a safe and inclusive and welcoming school environment that recognizes and celebrates the diverse identities within our community, so everyone feels a sense of belonging. We are dedicated to providing equitable resources, staff professional learning, and support to ensure students and staff from all backgrounds, identities, or abilities reach their full potential and pursue their unique talents. In terms of vision, we see a future where every student, family, faculty, and staff member feels at home in Mount Lebanon. Mount Lebanon School District seeks to build a lasting legacy of community where diversity naturally thrives and flourishes in our schools through inclusivity, belonging, and accessibility. We currently have 21 staff members from across the district and 14 students in grades five through 12, and we are looking for students and staff to join Libo United. This voluntary group works to move the district forward by giving students and staff the power to ensure a more equitable and inclusive district. Signups are through September the 16th. We had students that graduated last year, and we have been able to replace them with the same number of students who graduated plus some, which is really exciting. In terms of our meeting dates, our next meeting date is September the 17th. It's virtual from 3:45 to 4:45. The future meetings will be held monthly. We'll include subcommittee meetings in addition to monthly group meetings, and will be set for the year at the first meeting based on availability of committee members. And then in terms of Libo United scheduled updates to the board, we have one this month. We'll have another one in November, another one in March, and then one in May to finish out our school year. And then our subcommittee goals that we have been working on are related to developing a comprehensive professional development plan for all staff to support district culture, equity, and inclusion, ensuring all stakeholders feel safe, supported, and included as valued members of the school community. And then the third goal, utilize culturally responsive and inclusive curriculum and instructional strategies for all students. Just to kind of talk a little bit about the start-of-the-year trainings related to culture and safety, this year at the start of the school year, all staff received Title IX training and legal updates. They received an overview of district safety expectations. They learned about threat assessment and situational awareness, and they also received training on Alice, which is our training related to student safety in the event of an emergency, student and staff safety in the event of an emergency. Administration received threat assessment training, National Incident Management System training on the introduction to incident command systems for schools, Title IX training and legal updates specific to administrators, as well as training on providing students with support. And then Student Services received a review of threat assessments and suicide prevention, an overview of the child line process, how to identify and provide student support, gaggle and go guardian implementation to protect students from cyberbullying and other areas that are related to the Internet and using the Internet, and then the necessity for confidentiality when talking about student situations. That is our update. We are really excited about our meeting next week on the 17th. We imagine that we'll get a few more people sign up between now and next week, and when we get together again in November for an update, we'll have information related to our work during the first quarter of the school year. And that's my update.
All right. I'm going to open it up to questions and comments from the board on the Libo United presentation. Sorry, focused. Questions and comments on the Libo United presentation?
I'd just like to say thank you so much. I am excited to see, you know, what happens throughout the school year. I know, you know, the climate sometimes can be heavy, and this work is extremely important to make sure that our students, our community members, everyone feels safe, insecure, and they feel like they belong. So I'm very excited for next week. So thank you.
I echo those remarks. You know, doing this work deliberately is very important to our school culture, our greater community, and it's good to see these updates and look forward to the next one.
I'm also chiming in with the same remarks as Mr. Hoffman and Mrs. Crable, that we're excited to see the direction that the committee takes this year and to see the student presentations next week, or hopefully it's next week, I believe, as well as Mrs. Crable addressed, sometimes there are heavy situations, and we want to make sure our students are supported and feel included.
Yeah, I guess I do have a follow-up question. So on the professional learning, I know there's sort of a goal and a subcommittee that's going to be working on that, but can you talk about, a lot of the update was focused on student safety, which is also of paramount importance, but can you talk about anything that is planned in terms of cultural competency or like learning and instruction strategies, anything for this year that you already sort of have in the works related to the Libo United work?
Yes. So our professional learning model has changed for the school year. We're moving to more of a conference model for the remainder of the school year, where we are giving people opportunities to engage in both required trainings as well as trainings that can be based upon their need, right? And those trainings will be in relation to instructional practices, culture, safety, and artificial intelligence. As it relates to culture and instructional practices, it's really meeting students where they are and understanding the students that we serve every day and making sure that we have ways that we can reach them and support them. So those training opportunities will be embedded in our professional learning throughout the school year. And I will remind everyone that the work that we're doing through the professional development model is led by our educators, which is also very exciting because we have quite a few people who, more than quite a few people, some very talented individuals within the school district that are interested in sharing their practices. And in my opinion, that's the best way to impact student outcomes and impact change in the school district. So as we get closer to those dates, the next time that we meet November the 11th, there'll be another update on the professional learning that we provided because that training will take place on November the 4th.
Which is a day off of school.
It is very true.
All right. Other questions and comments on the update?
Thank you, Dr. Fries. I know that for some of us, this may feel like deja vu all over again, but we are also going to discuss as a board the proposed policy adoption and revision as we are transitioning from our current policy format to the Pennsylvania School Board Association, or PSBA, format. It is a Herculean effort to tackle huge chunks of policy at a time, so we appreciate everyone sticking with us this month. I think we're looking at the 000 policies, which are related to how the board operates. And I know the policy committee just met and discussed, I can't even count, many policies related to that, as well as annual review policy related to parental and family engagement. Dr. Fries, I don't know if you want to provide a highlight, overview of the discussion and some of the questions that have already come up, and then we'll open it to questions from the full board.
Okay. So we went through like a million policies. So I'm going to try to give you the Melissa Fries high-level version, and I will try not to get in the weeds because it's very easy to get in the weeds because policies put us in the weeds sometimes. So the first one that we looked at was Triple Zero, which is Board Policy Procedure and Administrative Regulations. And basically what this states is kind of like how we create board policies, whose roles are what in terms of how those policies are made, and then how those policies, moving forward, will have administrative regulations, which is new to the school district, that will allow us to align our thinking and our practices throughout the district rather than kind of having like a verbal or oral tradition of how we handle things. So that would be the highest level. If you want me to be more detailed, I most certainly can. The conversations in this one was more or less like, what is the timeframe around administrative regulations being completed? Set around two months so that we can process it and make sure that it's accurate as we're going through it. And then the other thing is something that you mentioned already, Mrs. Fleischer, that we're moving from NSBA, which is the National School Board Association, to the Pennsylvania School Board Association system for policies, and that these policies for the public are all available in board docs, for your view, both past policies and future policies. This particular policy aligns to the current policy BG.
Yes. And I think just a note on process from what I've been able to, thank you to the policy committee for engaging in this work tonight and this year, every month, for many hours, is we are going to use the PSBA sort of model policy as a baseline, and then where applicable, weave in some local language from existing policy or from additional board input to kind of come up with our own version of the PSBA policies. So that's what you'll see when you look at the revised policies and board docs. You'll see some of that language has already been flowed over. So I think we're going to take this sort of one policy at a time. So did anyone on the board have any questions or comments specific to 000, local board procedures?
I just have one question. I'm sorry, Dr. Fries, can you clarify again against the admin regulations of Triple Zero and how that differs from what we used to have?
So we did not have written administrative regulations in the past, but our goal is to have for the policies that it's kind of necessary. Like, the next one we go over won't really need an administrative regulation, and you'll see why once we talk about it. But for instance, the bullying and harassment policies that we created last month are a prime example of something that we need to have in writing as to how we handle the investigation, the after, the kind of pre, all of the pieces and parts to that. It is really important for us to have the same administrative regulations, whether you are a kindergartner or if you're a 12th grader, no matter what school you're in.
I had a question about the terminology used in this one. Board has policy and procedures, and then administration has regulations. When I think of board policies, those are many, and they are clearly listed. When I think of board procedures, I blend that sometimes with administrative regulations. So can you provide for us a clear delineation between what's a board procedure and what is an administrative procedure or an administrative regulation?
I don't think there are, the board procedures that I may have really are like the 00 policies. So how we call a meeting, how we structure the agenda, how we allow for public comment, so just sort of how the board procedurally operates, how we would fill a vacancy. But in general, I think the procedural pieces and the administrative regulations are synonymous.
I wonder if we need the word procedures in there because it is
Oh, in the title?
We have policies. And to your point, those examples, like how we fill a vacancy and how people are sworn into office and so forth, we just listed those as policies, even though they are procedures. I'm wondering if we need the term procedures in there because it's confusing whether the board decides how, for example, discipline would be, and the board doesn't decide those things. The administration decides those in regulations. So we don't necessarily have procedures that we follow that are separate from our policies. Our policies lay out what our procedures would be. So I think that it's redundant.
Some of this, I think, is going to also come up as we go through the PSBA process, that there are some like procedural subpolicies, if that makes sense. So we have policy 006, which is the policy on meetings, I think. And then there's like 006.1, which is related specifically to like how you would participate in a meeting virtually. But I think as we get into it, even with like the program, like other policy categories, if I was looking through the PSBA draft policies, there are some of those point ones, point twos, that are procedural elements of board policy versus ARs, which are administrative regulations. But they are usually related to more policy-level things. I know it is confusing. I agree. But I think that might be what they're referring to in the language here is the sort of subpolicies that flesh out for a handful of them, some more procedural elements of the policy. Do you have any?
No, that's how I would explain it, too. And I don't know if Mr. Peterson wants to add to it, but I think about the policies that we reviewed that were like in the event that you need to elect a new board president, or in the event that there's a vacant seat. Those are procedures within the policies related to that.
Yeah. And again, PSBA has elected to make that distinction really two ways. One is by referencing both and then adding these sort of decimal points. The thing that they share in common that differentiates them from administrative regulations is they're not in effect unless the board votes on. So the adoption, for instance, of 006.1 here will be just as formal and public as 006, the policy itself. It may be a bit of a distinction without a difference. I, you know, understand your question, but for some reason, the PSBA manuals, and this is throughout, they mention procedures throughout the volume. So, but again, to me, the best way to keep sort of track of it and score is if the board voted on it, it's a board procedure. If the administration has implemented it to follow up on a procedure, then it's administrative regulation.
The reason I bring that up, to your point exactly, is that that is confusing to the public. And we might be able to remember whether we voted on it or not, or whether that was discussed and determined to be an administrative role. But I believe that our community does not know the difference necessarily, or that they can't find it. It's confusing. And sort of just stand on saying it's redundant and confusing, and maybe that could be considered.
Unless we clarified it right in this section to identify that procedures follow numerically after a formally adopted policy.
A definition would help.
Is that what that is, though? I mean, 006 dot one is the example that's in front of us tonight. Is that a policy?
I mean, I've always viewed those as policies. I mean, I guess we could see if PSBA could provide any
Yeah, I mean, not to create more work, but I see Ms. Burdick's point.
It's a very good point.
They're all policies.
And so
There really aren't this distinct entity called board procedures. They're just all policies.
Yeah, unless we describe them as, that is what we mean by procedure, but I don't know if that's what PSBA intended. It's certainly a good thing to look at now because, as I said, as you go through, a lot more chapters coming up here, you're going to keep seeing references to procedures.
I think my concern is solved by a definition statement added under authority that what is a policy and what is a procedure and what is an administrative regulation. In terms of just a definition, would clarify it?
And this would be a good place to do it, in policy 000, since we're going to see the board.
Well, I mean, policy 000's formal title is local board procedures.
Yeah.
So that's the overarching title, is local board procedures. And then each one underneath it is basically how we're going to operate as a school board. So it's procedurally how we're going to act in a school board meeting. That's why it's called local board procedures. We can most certainly put a definition in the Triple Zero that, you know, states what a local board procedure is. I think that that's a simple, but it's the way that they, the overarching umbrella is local board procedures.
Yeah. If, Mr. Wyland, to your point, is it a policy? If you look at the first sentence of the next paragraph, "The policies of the board shall consist of policies and procedures." It's sort of inherently confusing, but it does, it does appear to say they're both policies. So I think we could clarify, you know, what the difference might be through a definition.
Okay.
Other questions on 000?
We're off to a roaring start.
I know, and I have another one. I'm sorry. I was, so we have in this policy, this statement, "Policies have historically been codified using NSBA. Moving forward, they'll be codified." That's going to be obsolete in a year. So I don't know that we need the first sentence about historically and moving forward in this. Because I think, you know, it'll be obsolete once we're done with this ungodly procedure. All right. Other questions or comments moving on? Moving on. Okay.
So the next one is 001, Name and Classification. This should be a really simple one because it just says that we're the Mount Lebanon School District, and the board will be officially known as the Board of School Directors of the Mount Lebanon School District. It includes in here our address, that we are in the municipality, municipal boundaries of the Mount Lebanon municipality, that we're here to provide a public education to serve the needs of the students in the Commonwealth, and it basically says like what we're able to do from a legal standpoint.
Love it. Questions or comments on 001?
And this one replaces policy AA, which is school district legal status.
Just a question. So I was in the policy meeting, and we talked about how we're a second class instead of a third class, and I was going to ask, like, what does that mean? Is that something that we would want to define in there, like what that is, what that means?
Our current policy doesn't even describe what class we are. I mean, again, it means we're between 30 and 250,000 residents.
I think there is a description in here. So all of these footnotes that link to either other ordinances or further information, and that one's footnoted. So I don't think the link is live right now.
Yeah, I was going to say it wasn't working.
It will be in our, in our policy manual, so people can figure out what our second, third class means in the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on 001? Okay. 002, I think there's a typo on the agenda that's
Let's say authority.
Authority and powers.
This one is in connection with policy BBAA from our current system, which is Board Member Authority and Responsibilities. And in this particular one, it talks about the authority to establish, equip, furnish, operate, and maintain the public schools of the Mount Lebanon School Districts, is vested in the Board of School Directors, which is a body incorporated and constituted and governed by Title 24 of the Pennsylvania statutes. In here, it also talks about that we educate students residing in the district between the ages of five and 22 years old. It talks in here also about that the board shall act as the general agent of the residents of the school district in matters of public education, that the board shall adopt board procedures for its own operation and policies for the guidance of the superintendent of the operation of the school district. They should be consistent with law, have a rational and substantial relationship to a legitimate purpose of the board. The board of directors are not vested in the individual board member. No such individual is authorized to act on behalf of the board to carry out any of the board's authorized powers, except for those stated in the law. In addition to that, it talks about how board members can act as an individual with personal views but cannot act as one member for the entire board. In addition to this, it talks about the individual board member should refer all complaints or requests directly or indirectly relating to instruction, personnel, or services to the superintendent, and that individual board members shall refrain from publishing, distributing, releasing, or disclosing any documents, records, or information containing or reflecting pre-decisional deliberation on items such as the budget, legislative proposals, or any contemplated or proposed policy or course of action. In addition to that, it lists out the role of the board and gives like seven items here as to what the role is of the board members, as well as what their responsibilities are as board members.
Just a quick procedural note on this, because we're going to be retiring. So this actually retires two policies, I believe. BBA, which is Board Powers and Responsibilities, which is really the language up in the first part of the policy, and then BBAA, which is Board Member Authority and Responsibilities, which really is that second part that talks about the individual board member responsibilities.
Yes.
Any questions or comments on 002?
I have a comment because I was listening to the prior meeting in which Mr. Hoffman made a good suggestion about using inclusive language and equity. And it was in a different, his comment was related to that occurring in a different policy. But it is also our role and responsibility as board members, so I wanted to bring it up again as a good idea that could be placed here. It seemed perhaps a better fit for the role and responsibility, procedure or policy. Yeah, see, there I go. Policy, rather than, or in addition to, the one, which I don't remember which one we were referring to, but maybe both.
Yep.
Like kind of expand upon number six under role, like being advocate for public education and children, like make that more thorough.
Yeah. Well, and I wonder if it talks about articulating the mission of the district, but I think that we have like a mission and vision and value statements as well as an equity statement, and maybe we put all of those sort of bedrock statements that we have into what the role of the board is.
Do you want to put them, the full statements?
No, just say to uphold the
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I agree with the comment that was made, that the more explicitly we state that, the clearer our values are.
But I think reference to the mission, the vision, and the equity statement without, you know, sort of block quotes, if you mind. Because then as we update that, as it's necessary, you know, it's in alignment.
Yeah, because I think we revisit some of those bedrock statements every strategic planning cycle. So they do change, or they could change. Other questions or comments on 002? Other questions or comments on O O Two?
Great suggestion, Linda.
Thanks. I second that. Same time. Uh, right, and then the next one, O O Three, talks about the functions?
Functions of the Board, this one will replace BDD, which is the Board Superintendent Relationship. And in this particular one, it talks about the board shall exercise leadership through its rulemaking power by adopting board procedures and policies for the organization and operation of the school district in accordance with Policy Zero Zero Zero. It talks about how the board may, upon a majority of vote, cause to suspend at any time the operation of a board procedure or policy, um, provided the suspension does not conflict with legal requirements. Um, in addition to that, it talks about how the superintendent serves as the chief executive officer of the district to enforce the statutes of the Commonwealth, regulations of the State Board of Education, the policies of the board, and all other applicable laws and regulations. Um, and that the superintendent is responsible for implementing board policies and establishing administrative regulations for the operation of the school district. It also talks about the board reserves the right to review and direct revisions to administrative regulations when it considers the regulations to be inconsistent with board policy or district practices. However, the board shall not adopt administrative regulations unless required by law or requested by the superintendent. Um, in addition to this, you will notice that there is a chart listed here that is taken from our last policy, um, our current policy, that talks about board responsibilities and superintendent responsibilities. There's a list of seventeen items for each, which I will not read, but are available to the public. Um, and the board has already reviewed those. Um, and then in terms of review, the board may assume jurisdiction over controversies or disputes arising within the school district concerning any matter over which the board has authority granted by statute, or the, where the board has retained jurisdiction and contract or policies. Um, and basically either before the board or where appropriate under applicable law, before a committee of the board or hearing officer, that those can be heard. Um, and then finally, the evaluation of board procedures. The board shall review and evaluate its functions as a board when deemed necessary. And the board may evaluate board procedures, relationships, or activities, or focus on a particular area or issue. Um, the board president working with the superintendent may develop an annual plan of review and evaluate board functions.
Questions or comments on functions? Okay. Uh, the next policy up for review is Policy O O Four related to membership.
This one is a replacement for BBE vacancies on Board of Directors. Um, this particular policy talks about the board consisting of nine members, um, with the superintendent on, with a seat on the board with the right to speak, but not to vote. Um, the qualifications are listed here. These are consistent with state law as related to age, good moral character, and other items that, um, have been in place due to state law. Election of members of the board shall be in accordance with law. Um, and then it like lists out the way in which vacancies shall, um, be handled in the event of death, resignation, removal from a district or region, or otherwise, that they will be filled in accordance with the School Code and Sunshine Act. Um, the school director so appointed shall serve for the remainder of the unexpired term, or if earlier, or if earlier until the first Monday in December after the first municipal election occurring more than sixty days following their appointment. It talks about temporary vacancy as it relates to people that are in active military service. And then it lists out the procedures for how a vacancy would be handled in terms of announcing it to the public, um, requesting interested candidates, reviewing resumes, uh, interviewing candidates at public meetings, and then in the event of the vacancy, um, to be filled, basically how that will, how that will take place. The term of office shall be four years, um, unless it is a case of a vacancy that needs to be filled during a term. And then in terms of removal, um, a school director can be removed if they no longer reside in the school district. If they neglect or refuse to attend two successive regular meetings of the board, unless due to sickness or prevented by necessary absence from the district. Um, if a person elected or appointed as a school director having been notified, shall refuse or neglect to qualify as such director, the remaining members within ten days following the beginning of their term of office declare said office vacant on an affirmative vote of the majority. The next couple of sections here talk about expenses and how, um, expenses for board members can be covered for things like educational in-state or out-of-state conventions, that no school director can be reimbursed for more than two out-of-state meetings in one school year, that they can be, they can receive advance payments for such conferences. However, will need to provide verification that they spent the money that they intended to spend. Um, and then in terms of orientation, it talks about bringing on new school board members and how no law, uh, later than their first board meeting for use during their term, that they get a copy of School Code, a copy of the Board Policy Manual, current budget statement, audit report, and related fiscal materials, access to district information on comprehensive planning, curriculum assessments of facilities and district programs, and then a copy of the board's adopted principles for governance and leadership. Um, they are also invited to meet with the board president, superintendent, and board secretary to discuss board functions, procedures, and policy. The next section here talks about the opportunity for school director education and training, and the importance of the planning, um, and discussions with the board along with the superintendent to provide these opportunities. In addition to this, it gives you an example of doing things that can be, um, set up for board members or that board members can participate in. And then the next section here talks about, again, this idea of conference attendance, um, what the purpose of those are and what the guidelines are for, um, the attendance at these conferences. And then the final one is student representation, where it gives authorization for student representation at the board in order to facilitate effective communication and provide an opportunity for students to participate in school governance.
All right. Uh, questions or comments on the membership policy? I just wanna say I was listening, uh, at home during the discussion, and I know there was some talk about potentially figuring out a system for student representatives on the board to possibly be implemented next school year, and I would wholeheartedly support that as well.
All right, our next one is Organization, and this is replacing current policy BDA and BDE. BDA is Board Organizational Meeting, and BDE is Board Committees. Um, for this particular policy, um, let me just pull it up. It talks about board members shall meet and organize annually during the first week of December. Um, they are to receive a written invitation five days before the meeting by the board secretary. Um, the order of the meeting is the organization meeting is called by the order of the president or vice president. A temporary president shall be elected from among the holdover members of the board. The board secretary shall be secretary in the meeting. In an election year, certificates of election or appointment of all new board members shall be read. Um, the holdover president or designee will arrange for a local judicial official to administer the oath of office to the new directors if necessary. In the absence of such official, the temporary president may administer the oath. That was something that during the discussion of the policies that we discussed adding, so the board can consider it during this time in which we're discussing it as well. Um, and then the next section just talks about the, the types of officers that are here, which is the president, the vice president, the secretary, um, that a treasurer is appointed. Um, in addition to that, the, let's see. And then it talks about appointments. The board shall have the opportunity to appoint a tax collector, solicitor, right-to-know officer, and coordinator, independent auditor, delegates to a state convention or association of school directors. And then under resolutions, the more, the board may be at the organization meeting, but shall prior to July one, um, select or designate the normal day, place, and time for regular meetings, normal day, place, and time for open committee meetings. And then in terms of board committee, the president has the authority to designate all. No official action is authorized to be taken place at a committee. Committees are to report their recommendations to the board at a public meeting. And then the board president has the opportunity to also appoint ad hoc committees that can be, um, set up, provided with a charge with a fixed termination date, um, which could be extended by the president. And it also states within this policy that a board member can refuse to serve on any one committee shall, but it shall not be the grounds for failure to appoint a member to another committee. So you may not like the committee you were appointed to, you can say, "I'm not interested in that," but the board president could, um, assign that person to another, another poli, another committee. And then in addition to that, it talks about consultants and the ability to appoint, employ, or retain consultants within the school district as a school board of directors.
All right, questions or comments on the organization policy?
Things that we wanted to kind of have a broader conversation about, um, in this particular policy. And one was, um, at the beginning, either, you know, maintaining our existing practice of having a judge or magistrate perform the oath of office, and if not, then the temporary president, or the president can. And then, um, reviewing and having a broader conversation about how we appoint this solicitor at the meeting on the first Monday in December, when they don't have a ton of experience, not experience, they don't have a ton of like context or background regarding the qualifications of the solicitor. And to think about if there's a better way to do that, if there's a way that could like align it with the fiscal year to do more like predictive budgeting. So if anyone has any thoughts.
And can I add one more to the consideration table? So there is a policy that is not listed to be retired that we have, which is Policy BDB? Which defines our officers more fully, and it then, I think, adds clarity to like what the president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary do, um, for people in those roles as well as the public. And so I would also ask if it might be possible to look at that policy and incorporate some of that def, def, bleh, defining language, uh, cause here we just talk about the officers, but it doesn't say like what they do, so.
So is there not a corresponding?
No.
Okay.
So I think it would have to be in this policy that talks about electing those officers.
I think that's a very good suggestion, I would support that.
Otherwise, we're just gonna do whatever.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
And then the third thing, Ms. Guth, it had to do with the paper of record, I think. You said there were three things. There was some reference to the notification regarding the meeting being in a paper of record.
Oh, correct.
But, but I think we decided.
Yeah, we're just gonna delete.
We're just gonna delete that reference, cause it's not required under the law, so we don't wanna set the bar.
No, the, the, the notice of meeting is, but we don't need to mention that.
Right.
But the, the fact that we have to sort of appoint an official newspaper, no, that's not required, so we decided to remove that. And then my, my notes were that for now at least, for the next draft of this to go out, that we would reinsert the appointment date of the solicitor and then sort of keep the status quo for now, but, but know it's a topic for discussion.
Sure, so just, I, you know, I had a minute to think about it, um, between the policy committee meeting and now.
Literally one minute.
Some of, some of the, um, considerations regarding this point obviously is, uh, I mean, so, so number one, uh, you know, the appointment of a solicitor, um, to represent, you know, the board in the interest of the district is, um, is a very important thing that, that, you know, must be done transparently and publicly. Um, so it, you know, and it requires, uh, action of the board to do it, so it has to happen at a meeting. Um, it, it is a little bit unfair, in my opinion, to ask, you know, brand spanking new board members to, you know, swear in with their kids and then take a seat, and the first thing they do is being asked to vote on something so important. We've been very fortunate, um, to have, um, such, uh, capable, competent representation for, for so many decades that it was, I'm sure, an easy call for, for many board now, but who knows what, what the future holds? So it, to me, it's a question of timing. Um, you know, I, I, the more I think about it, the more I like the idea of aligning it with the fiscal year, um, because obviously you're, you're making a commitment to, you know, a, a person or a firm to serve in that capacity that has, you know, budgetary considerations. Um, plus that you, when you think about the timing of that, you know, mid calendar year, um, you know, you, the, the, the board members that are serving at that point will have a minimum of six months under their belt to weigh into that, so if there is any appetite for change, then there is an opportunity, you know, to, to really, you know, do it thoughtfully. Um, um, so my suggestion, actually, at, at this moment, I know it's a little bit different than what we discussed at the policy meeting, i- is perhaps just leave it out of this policy. I don't think it's required to be in this policy.
So yeah, is it left out because we're required to appoint a solicitor, but we're not actually required?
To do it at the organization.
To redo it annually?
Or?
Or are we required to do it annually?
Uh, actually, so it's, 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 and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, you know, the solicitor serves at the pleasure of the board.
Right.
Right, so it can be, we can say, "You're our solicitor until we tell you different." I think it's a good practice, um, as a, as a political entity to revisit it annually so that it's transparent and that, you know, that it's, that it's clear. So I like the idea of doing it annually. It's a question of timing, and for the reasons that I sort of described, that I think perhaps the reorganization meeting isn't the, the best place to put it. Um, it doesn't mean that we can't, you know, again, cause it's not required under the law that it be part of this policy. Um, so as, as, as we figure out where we're gonna go in the future, I, 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 so moral of the story, I would leave it out of this policy.
It's in the policy.
It was in the old policy.
Well, it's in the policy that we can, that we have the authority to appoint a solicitor, but it's not in the policy very specific as to when or how, just whenever we need to.
And I think that's a good thing, too. I agree, just to leave it out for now, right? We can.
Well, the issue, the issue is that the, the, uh, the resolution that's in effect now that was adopted last year at the organization meeting, uh, appoints a solicitor until the first Monday in December.
Right.
Oh.
So we would appoint a solicitor then, but it doesn't have to say it in this policy.
Yeah, you could remove it, you could appoint a solicitor then.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the other, the other thing I was thinking in, in terms of for years beginning the following year, we already have a clause that says the school director shall annually during the month of May elect a treasurer for a ti, period of one year. Um, although I think, perhaps though, what, what you were mentioning is, it, the term doesn't have to say one year. It can just say that the, but, but, I mean, do you, do you, are you saying that there should be a vote every, say, June or May?
I think so, yeah. I mean, I, I like the exercise, I mean, I realize that it's, that it's not legally necessary, you know, because it is, you know, at, at the will of the board, kind of a situation, but.
Well, it forces the thought, it forces the discussion.
Yep.
So, but I'm just wondering if it, the, the, I think the reason the treasurer appointment, well, I know the reason for the treasurer appointment date is that's what the School Code says, right? Says the treasurer will be elected in May first, but does it make sense to do both of those things in May?
Yeah, I, I think certainly.
The secretary is in May every four years as well, so it would be a.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna do every four years, but, but, um, so it would be a slightly separate paragraph, because the, the treasurer has to be for a term of one year. But if you, if, if, if in this policy, you just indicated that, you know, with the, effective after the next reorganization meeting, uh, the, the board will, how is it worded? The solicitor for the district shall be voted on and appointed for the upcoming, or, well, for the upcoming fiscal year each, I don't know, June, May, what, what, what would be?
Yeah, the only thing that I, cause it also says here, we have the authority to appoint a tax collector, which we do on an annual basis. But it doesn't say when, have to say when.
Is that July?
So I don't know that we have to put a date in the policy, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't know why we're, we're talking about the date if it doesn't need to be there, right? I mean, I know what you're saying about the, the resolution.
And we'll definitely do that.
And so we could, right, so we're, we're still following that if in December we do that. But then moving forward.
Sure, we can re-up at a different time during the year.
Yeah, so, so we just would need to be careful that the resolution for this December says.
Until further action.
That we, this, we appoint the. that we appoint the solicitor until further action by the board.
Sure.
To make it clear that it's not locked into every December.
Yep, I think that, I'm comfortable with that.
And then, yeah, the practice of, for instance, the tax collector's pointed sometime in the summer, because we just voted on it pretty recently. Was it just last month?
June.
June.
June, okay. So, yeah, but that's not by policy, that's just a practice that we have.
Right.
That, you know, and again, once it's in a June agenda, it will always be there to be looked at following June.
Sure.
So, okay. So in that case, we'll leave this the way it is.
Yes.
Not even going to address this.
Yes, that's my suggestion.
Mrs. Walters, to make sure when we put that agenda together that we, instead of having it say, "appointed until next December," just say, "until further action by the board."
Is everyone okay with, is anyone not okay with that, I guess? Like just leaving the language as it currently is, that we can appoint a solicitor and not adding a specific time that we would do that?
Wasn't Mr. Peterson's point that this entire resolution is geared towards the organizational meeting, the reorganization meeting?
It's how the board is organized, not organizational meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it's an unfortunate title, in my view. I would call it the reorganization meeting, but it's.
Well, I think the organization meeting is part of it, and then, but then it also talks about things we can do, like appointments, resolutions, committees, that happen throughout. It's sort of how we're organized as a board.
Well, the first paragraph is correctly identified as organization meeting.
Yeah.
So I guess to clarify, if we're not changing the language on this, except to say, "until further action by the board," then we would still be appointing a solicitor in December, which is timely and relevant. So we would appoint them in December, and nobody here is new, so, and everybody here is part of that process, so that makes sense. Then we're considering bringing that up again for a vote only six months after the appointment of a new solicitor.
Maybe just to get it on the cycle and we can like explain that part, just.
I don't know, I'd say go a year, let them go a year. That sounds like a lot to go through to interview in order to be maybe not appointed after six months.
Oh, no, we're not doing inter, like, what did you say? Like, we wouldn't be interviewing new people to be solicitors six months later. It's just about, I think it's, it's, it's good what Mr. Weyland said about doing it, I agree with the fiscal year time, but we wouldn't be going through that whole process. It would just.
So it's just like a rubber stamp in June, then, a formality.
Right. Unless anybody brings up.
I mean, not unless, right.
Not necessarily, but the timing of it being later in the year, you know, to the extent that, you know, in the years where there's an election, that there could be, you know, meaningful turnover on, you know, the composition of the board, you know, after folks swear in with their kid, they're not asked to sit down and vote on something so monumental without really, you know, having greater insight into the decision.
Well, as long as, my point, my opinion is that as long as we're keeping it one year, then even if you've just been sworn in and you just vote on that, it would be the, it would be the responsibility of the board president for that month prior to, like, explain the situation to the new board member so that they were prepared for voting, which you do, which has been done in every case. Then let's say they vote in December, and it's only for one year, and their term is four years, they have, well, months in which to form a reasonable assessment.
I don't think we have to decide right now when we're gonna do it, because what I think is on the table is just to keep a date out of the policy. So just because we have more policies and then more agenda items, is it okay if we table for now the discussion of exactly when and how, but just say we're okay with leaving the policy as drafted, which is, we can appoint a solicitor, and it doesn't specify as to the date or the when? Or does anyone really want to put a specific date in the policy?
I agree with Mr. Weyland that we should vote every year, and it shouldn't be indefinite.
Well, you can do that without putting it in the policy.
Yeah, right.
Your actual resolution will, so, I mean, you could say that they serve until the next, until further action by the board, but then have a, just a standard practice like the tax collector of having that agenda item come up every year.
Similar to appointing delegates, appointing an auditor, these are things we do without having it be by policy at a specific time. The other things are subject to code, so we have to do them at specific times. All right, so we, did anyone have any thoughts on, or objections to adding back our local language about having a magistrate, or somebody, do you swear again? I think that's fine.
Can I bring up one question with the newspaper of record? As I do know that there are neighboring school districts who've taken that opportunity as it comes up in the organization meeting to show support to the striking workers of the Pittsburgh Post Gazette and make it a point not to have them be the newspaper of record, but if it doesn't come up, then we wouldn't really ever have that conversation as a board, whether that's something we value or want to do. So is there an issue with having it in the policy? It may just be performa, but there may be times like now when.
If they go out of business, we'd have to update the policy. I think it's better to just, since it's not required by law, to leave it out.
Yeah, well, I mean, other school directors, what I'm saying is have directed the district not to advertise with the Post Gazette because of the strike, for example.
The only challenge is, is there isn't many other options that are publicly available.
Who they use?
I don't, Bethel Park is the district, so I don't know.
Well, they may have a public newspaper that qualifies. I'm not aware of one at Mount Lebanon. But the comment that I made earlier is, the board certainly is free to discuss that, but I, the, the, the policy seems to indicate that that's required. I just wanted to point out that it's not. The decision on where to advertise can be, well, right now it's made administratively.
So is the sort of will of the board to just strike that from the policy?
That would be my suggestion. I mean, if it's not required, you know, it doesn't.
Agreed.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the organization policy?
So just to be clear, as I have it, is at this point, we're leaving as is on the solicitor issue. We're gonna, we're gonna add the judicial officer language, and we're gonna delete the newspaper reference and add former policy BDB as a new section to this policy. Does this what all the officers do, correct?
And then retire that policy when we get to the retirements.
So all of those changes have been made in the draft, except for the BDB language, which I will update tomorrow.
Thank you. Where are we? We are at 006 meetings.
006 meetings will be the retirement of current policies BEA, BEB, BEBA, BEC, and BEDA, which is BEA is the regular board meetings. And then BEB is the special board meetings. BEBA is emergency board meetings. BEC is executive sessions. And the last one, which is BEDA, is notification of board meetings. So in this particular one, it starts with what the parliamentary authority is, what a quorum is, the presiding officer being the president, unless the president is unavailable, then it's the vice president. If the vice president isn't available, the process in which you select another person. Meeting notifications, it states that emergency meetings and executive sessions do not have to be advertised or posted. It talks about the notice of regular meetings, the notice of all special meetings, notice of all rescheduled meetings, all needing to be 24 hours' notice, except for the notice of a regular meeting, which needs to be at least three days prior to the time of the first regular meeting. The notice of all recessed or reconvened meetings, the notice of all open meetings shall be given to the newspapers circulating in Allegheny County, radio or television station with so requests. In addition to this, it talks about the agenda notifications, that the agenda, together with all relevant reports, should be provided to each school director before the meeting, that the agenda items, if the agenda includes items on business related to removal of an officer of the board, the agenda shall be provided to each school director at least seven days before the voting meeting. The district shall publicly post the agenda on the district website at the location of the meeting, at the district's administrative office, that the agenda preparation is the responsibility of the superintendent in cooperation with the board president, that additions to the agenda can happen for the following reasons. Emergencies, business arising within 24 hours prior to the meeting, business raised by residents or taxpayers during a meeting. And then it talks about during a meeting, the board may add a qualifying matter of business to the posted agenda by majority vote of the school directors present and voting. In addition to that, it talks about the posting of agenda requirements and rules for adding items to a posted agenda applied to both regular and special, special open meetings of the board. The requirements and rules do not apply to conference sessions or executive sessions. Regular school board meetings shall be open and shall be held at specified places at least once every two months. It lists the current times that we hold, current times and dates or times during the month that we hold our discussion and business meetings. It talks about special meetings and how they can be called for special or general purposes, that a president may call a special meeting at any time and shall call a special meeting upon presentation of the written request of three school board members. Public participation is open during each board meeting in which there's an opportunity to provide public comment. It talks about voting and all the motions that are, that, that, all the motions shall require adoption of a majority of vote of those school directors present and voting. All votes on motions and resolutions shall be by a voice vote unless an oral roll call vote is requested by the president. In addition to that, it talks about all the special voting requirements. There's quite a few of them that can be read in the documents that are provided in board docs. It talks about absenteeism from voting and how a school district director shall be required to abstain from voting when it's a conflict of interest under the Ethics Acts, Act, or it's a relative recommended for appointment to or dismissal from a teaching position. It talks about minutes and what those minutes should include for each meeting. It talks about how you can recess and reconvene. It talks about what executive sessions can be handled or held for. It talks about what a work session is and how they can be scheduled. And then it talks about standing committee meetings and how they can be called and how the committee chairperson can set the agenda and the requirement for public notice.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the meeting policy? It's very long, but I have some suggestions. There's another policy BED, that's not mentioned as one of them, I think, which is our current meeting procedures policy. A lot of it is captured, but I think there are some things that are helpful for both board members to understand how a meeting is gonna progress as well as the public. There are things in that policy about how a board member can suggest a topic for an agenda. There is an order of business at a meeting. There's information about the rules of order for a meeting that are not reflected in the policy currently. And I think if we could just do like a crosswalk and add some of that information and then also retire the BED, it would be helpful. Because we want to have the longest meeting. I don't know if that could be like a 006.2, but in terms of like the sample agenda and the rules of order for the meeting, that we disseminate that sometimes, or we used to have like, here's the meeting procedures for folks who are attending. But however we do it, I think it's important to.
That would be clarity on the original question that I asked at the beginning, is which is a policy and which is a procedure? The procedures are delineated by point 001 or point 002.
I think sometimes.
And the policies are numbered otherwise.
Yeah, not all of them are delineated by a point one. Some of them are within the policies.
Yeah, I think a lot of these are just procedural ways that we do board business. Figure it out. We'll, we'll add those definitions. Other, so there seem to be no other comments about the meetings? There is a point one about remote attendance at meetings.
And that is reflective of policy BEDL, which is board teleconferencing. And this particular policy talks about how a board member can attend a meeting through telephonic, electronic, or virtual communications. And we have to make sure that that individual can hear everything that is said at the meeting as a remote receiver. In addition to this, if the board president determines either condition is not occurring, such as that they, somebody can't hear it at home, they shall terminate the remote board meeting's attendance through electronic communications. If for any reason the remote board member's attendance is terminated before the adjournment, the meeting shall continue without further participation of the remote board member. Termination of the remote board member's attendance prior to the adjournment of the meeting shall not affect the validity of such actions taken by the board prior to that or after the termination of the call. In addition to that, it talks about how the board member should submit a request to the board president or designate in advance of the meeting to ensure their virtual participation, that the board member must ensure they're in a quiet location free from background noise, and they must participate in the entire board meeting. The board president can deny a request for this virtual presence. In addition to this, at the beginning of the meeting, the board president will notify the public and the other board members that this person will be virtual. And then in addition to that, the board member may participate in the meeting as they would if they were present here within the meeting. And then if everybody went virtual, for whatever reason, the board shall ensure adequate means for public participation that may vary from typical public participation. We already have this in place for our in-person meetings to be able to communicate virtually, so this, this won't really impact us. And then it is the responsibility of the administration to make sure that we have the technology available to adhere to this policy.
Okay, any questions about this remote participation?
One of the things Mr. Peterson brought up was that during the pandemic, by board action, the prior policy concerning remote attendance and quorum were suspended by a resolution of the board, and that resolution provided until further action of the board, those, you know, that suspension will remain in effect. Now, in a way, by voting for this new policy, that is, further action of the board that changes the rules back to sort of more or less where they were, but Mr. Peterson has suggested that we consider an additional resolution to explicitly rescind the prior resolution from three or four years ago, but belted and suspended.
We never rescinded it.
Yeah, we never rescinded it. So the, as I've thought about it a few more minutes, let me think about it some more, because the reality is, with this new policy, we're not bringing any part of the old one back.
Right.
There's no requirement to be here physically as a quorum. Someone's presence virtually counts as a quorum.
Yep.
We're not gonna have the requirement of a maximum of two remote meeting participations. So the more I'm thinking about it, the adoption of this resolution is that future board action. So I think it'll sort of resolve itself, but I'll, if, if, if we need a little extra language in the resolution, I'll add it.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? All right, 007.
Next one is new to us. It doesn't have a complementary policy in our current system. It's school board administration communication policy. And this basically sets forth a communication policy for school board members and school district administrative teams. The guidelines list what the superintendent's role is.
It states that we, that the superintendent will advise the president and all other board members as soon as practicable on school or school-related developments that are controversial, sensitive to press reaction, involve public safety, or have legal implications. And that the board, if they have that information, will share it with the superintendent. All board members, official communication with the school district are to be initiated with or through the superintendent or appropriate administration liaison. The superintendent can designate that liaison. The school administration will advise the superintendent of communication with board members involving school-related matters. All school board members' requests for school district information regarding school board business will be directed to and through the superintendent. It's the superintendent's responsibility to provide timely provision of requested information. Should fulfilling a board member's request require significant use of staff time or cost, the superintendent may seek approval prior to taking action on the request. This provision is not intended to prevent administration from fulfilling its obligation for timely information under right-to-know laws, but rather to manage the resource impact of information requests in a reasonable manner. The board president or committee chair in collaboration with the superintendent of schools shall establish the meeting agenda prior to the scheduled meeting. Subsequent to the publication of the agenda, new agenda items may only be added if specifically permitted by law under policy 006. And the school, the superintendent's responsible for providing board members with information about agenda items prior to the scheduled meeting. And then finally, superintendent or designee is responsible for official communications with the press regarding school district matters. President of the board or designee is responsible for commuting with the press regarding official school board business.
All right. Were there any questions or comments on policy 007?
The next one is 011, Board Philosophy, Principles for Governance and Leadership. And this is current policy BCA, which is the Board Member Code of Ethics. Under this particular policy, it lists out the board philosophy in six points, and then it lists out the principles for governance and leadership. For the six points for philosophy, it talks about being the finest educational program in a fiscally conscientious way, to staff the district with well-trained admin, to provide the best qualified teachers, and encourage professional growth, to develop, promote among the students a full appreciation for the ideals of our American representative republic, to construct and maintain proper facilities, and then to offer a rigorous and academically stimulating curriculum. Under Principles for Governance, they have individual bullet points, but just to give you an overarching view of this, it says that the board will advocate earnestly, lead responsibly, govern effectively, plan thoughtfully, evaluate continuously, communicate clearly, and act ethically.
All right. I know there was a lot of discussion on this particular policy and probably not as full of a discussion because it was past the time for the meeting. So I wanted to open this up for further discussion. It is my sense that we're going to need another month to work on this, to get it right, that we're not going to rush this. But I want to get the thoughts of folks out on the table. Maybe, maybe we will finish it all up tonight. But I feel like the comments were substantive and we want to make sure that we have time to get the policy right, have the committee give it a second read before referring it for a vote. But comments that came up in the meeting or that folks who were in the peanut gallery had on this particular policy. Let me just go around. I feel like everyone probably has something to share on this policy.
So I'll go first. I think that if we're able, and I was like playing with some wording, if we're able to add to the board philosophy in regard to the commitment of the Board of Education is, and I can read it whatever, but then say that this commitment to equity will guide all of the board's policies, decisions, and actions, period, then inherently it covers the principles.
Yeah, and I will say, I feel like, we'll go around. I have some thoughts and I'll see.
I like that, Mrs. Gelman. I support the idea of explicitly stating that we value racial equity, inclusion, the ideals that, that we want to put out there in an obvious way. I think it belongs, as I've said in 001, the role of a school board director. And I think it bears repeating under advocate earnestly. And I see there, there are purple bullet points that have been added, so I think we could add a purple bullet point under advocate. I'm not sure why advocate earnestly is purple, but adding under that the language that Mrs. Gelman suggested.
The, the way, the why, the reason why it's purple is just that we formatted it to be over and for bullet points to be underneath it.
Okay.
You see purple words then, like under the other areas, then it's been added.
The other area that would fit under in, in my thinking about this would be under plan thoughtfully or evaluate continuously. I would not wish to see it duplicated under every single one of these governance principles because I agree with the statement that it starts to sound like you, like you just stamped it everywhere. And so thoughtful placement of where it's most effective would be in the role, in my opinion, the role of the school board member would be for advocating. And then under advocate earnestly to spell out what we wish to advocate for in terms of equity and inclusion and equal access and, I mean, the broader picture, that not just one student group, but, and staff group, but actually accessibility and equity in larger terms, which I'm not good at phrasing that, but I think it belongs there.
Ms. Johnson, did you want to?
I agree with Mrs. Gelman's statement. And I, as to where to put it, that is, I guess, our bone of contention tonight. I agree, putting it under philosophy or advocating earnestly is something that we should definitely look at. That's my only point as I'm looking through this again. Thank you.
Mr. Wellin, I don't know if you had any thoughts you wanted to share on?
Sure, thank you. So similar to the thoughts and brief discussion that we had concerning the previous policy this evening, Ms. Fleischer, you suggested generally referencing the mission, vision, and equity statements. I'd like to employ a similar strategy with this for two reasons. One, as I, as I suggested in the the policy committee meeting, you know, when you start to make lists, you run the risk of inadvertently excluding, right? So I want to be wary of that, just generally as far as, you know, legally drafting a document. You know, I think broader is better. I think that the board spent a lot of time and was thoughtful in the, and the work that was put into drafting the equity statement that I think encompasses the sentiment here. So I think by referencing it, you know, perhaps early in this policy, under this board philosophy section, because to me, the reality is these principles for governance and leadership, all of them, all six or seven or eight of them, this, this is the execution stuff, right? So this is, you know, we, we provide that, you know, equity is the guiding light or one of the guiding lights of, of, of the work that we do, right? And, and the execution of that includes advocacy. It includes leading, it includes governing, planning, evaluating, communicating, and acting, right? So rather than picking a couple of those and trying to insert some reference to equity and diversity, really, all of them apply. So how do we put it in in a way that is not unintentionally exclusive and is broad enough that it applies to all of these things? I believe high level, towards the top, under philosophy, specifically referenced mission, vision, and an equity statement or something to that effect.
I'll take my turn. I also think, first of all, I agree with embedding our equity statement into the philosophy of the board and perhaps beefing up some of the PSBA draft language on their principles where appropriate to signal that that is also a commitment of the board. I also think there are a couple of things in this policy that make me hesitant to move it forward this month. One is, in the crosswalk, we also said that this would be replacing the educational philosophy of the board. And that policy is a three-page policy that I think is very important and is not necessarily captured here.
We changed our mind on that.
Okay, but I don't see where that would be.
We have to look at the other policies.
Okay, yeah, I was looking at the crosswalk to see where that might be.
It's not going to fit here.
Okay, there, and then the other thing is our ethics code is very strong right now. And I feel like it's watered down and it's so important that I might even argue for having it be as a point one to this policy and a standalone code of ethics for the board, rather than just try and capture it by pasting a few things into the PSBA, lead responsibly. And right now, some of it, but not all of it, is woven through those principles. So either we find a way to weave all of it through or we just have a standalone code of ethics, because I think that is very important. And I don't want to give it short shrift. And the only other thing I would say is looking ahead at the list of PSBA policies, just to remind the board, there is going to be an entire standalone policy on the mission, vision, and values of the district, which will be a subject for the strategic planning, but also an opportunity to really take in and be explicit there as well. And we have the option of adopting the PSBA educational equity policy in the 800s, I think, later on this year, which is a standalone policy, really just dedicated to talking about equity, particularly in academic outcomes. So those, even if we don't get every single thought right now about equity and inclusion into this one policy, it is not, it's not like this is the only place where we are going to signal the district's commitment to those really important topics. Although I think if we're talking about our philosophy, we should capture it here as well.
I agree with, with everything Mr., most agree with what everyone said, what Mr. Wellin said and you said about including it in the overarching philosophy. And I like your idea, Mrs. Fleischer, of adding the code of ethics as its own point one addition there.
Do you think a lot of it falls under authority and powers, like 002? Like a lot of it, some of it, ethics related?
Yes, that was what I pointed out, the authority and powers role of the board to advocate for children, that this would be a place to add explicitly stating the values of advocating for equity and racial justice.
Well, no, like having a standalone ethical, a policy related to ethics.
Like attached to that policy rather than the principles. Only, I only thought of it because act ethically is one of our principles and we're sort of unpacking that further.
That makes sense.
And there are some things that are not captured, which we could try and weave in through those principles, but I think they kind of lose their punch. I also agree with what everyone was saying as well. I do think it should be in philosophy as well as advocate earnestly, wherever we decide to put it. I do think what could help eventually is once we have the other policies in place and they are completed, that is where we then could go back and add those, you know, squared hyperlink boxes so that we don't have to necessarily worry about, you know, forgetting someone or not wording something correctly. We already have the policy and they can just click on it. It's there and it's attached. So that'd be my, my add. That's true. Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, the only thing I will add or, yeah, add to the conversation is I believe it's important, especially as a, is a predominantly white institution, that we are very explicit about the ways in which we want to fight against institutional racism. An equity statement is important, but policy and being specific and explicit throughout policy is certainly the recommendation of current research when trying to support communities that are historically marginalized. And, you know, it's an opportunity for us as we're going through our policies now. We're going through, what, we went through 11 or something just tonight, to really rethink our approach to how we're writing policy beyond the, you know, PSBA conversion. But really rethinking how we go after supporting all of our students and all of our communities. It seems like generally, the board as a whole is going, there was a lot of agreement around here and I understand, you know, that's part of this process, having these conversations, figuring out what's best for everyone. But I do just want to make that point that we need to constantly use that lens as we're looking at all policies and not just kind of throw it in one area or one overarching policy that then doesn't get looked at. The reality is when people look at policy, they pull up that one specific policy. You know, they're not going to the third policy that's being referenced back up above. You know, these words matter and, so that's kind of what I have to say about that.
No, and I totally agree that our lens on this needs to be baked in, not just off in a corner. And I think as we move through these, being intentional about thinking about that lens with each and every policy. I know we did last month when we were talking about Title IX and non-discrimination and harassment. I know we will next month when we're talking about the academic programs and our mission, vision, values as a district and curriculum and, you know, how we make, how we support students with disabilities and all of that. That's coming up next month. I think, like you said, it had, I think with each and every policy, we need to think through. through how we are codifying our commitments.
Yeah.
I agree. I think the sort of overarching, from what I'm hearing, will the board is to do that through specifically the philosophy section here, and then also looking at the principles and determining where it makes sense to additionally signal specific bullet points under those commitments that are related to our commitment to equity. And I think Mr. Hoffman sent some suggestions. I think we have also some that are bubbling up from the Libo United Group and just from experience in this area. So I guess I want to just take the pulse of, do we feel then that we've got enough input for Dr. Fries and Mr. Peterson to go back, edit this in a way that we would feel comfortable with and move it forward, or would people feel more comfortable having a second read and discussion next month, knowing that we also have a lot of other policies that are going to be on?
I am not doing as many policies ever again. For everybody's sanity. I think that next month, next month, if we were to, just to, here's a recommendation, because, there's a recommendation. Clara, I was, Mrs. Guth, I was getting ready to send you a memo, is that we do, I'm ambitious, right? Because I do want us to adopt policies that we believe in and that are, right? Right? But I also know that, like, this is like heavy work, right? We are not used to having to think this deliberately at 9:30 at night. At least, I'm not. And I don't expect anybody in this room, after you've worked a whole day, to come here and do that. So recommendation would be, let's pause on moving 011 forward. Let's add the potential for the ethics BCA policy to be a 011.1 or whatever we decide. And then next month, for the 200s, which is our next attack, we will do 200 enrollment in district.
Seems easy.
Seems easy. 201, admission of students, and 202, eligibility of non-resident students. And that way, we're kind of, we'll chunk them a little bit differently. We'll take a deep breath, and it'll allow us more time to have more deliberate conversation, and we'll stress people out less, because I see the, oh my goodness, this is like a lot, right?
Yeah.
And I don't want people to feel that way. I like, want you to enjoy this.
And I think part of, what, what, my...
The audience is gone.
I'm just thinking, like, we're going to do this all year, right? Probably well into next year. And I'm wondering about, I know some of us took the opportunity to provide feedback ahead of time. Some of us were emailing feedback during the Zoom meeting. And I'm just wondering if we can also just have more of, like, a heads up on what the schedule is, so if there's an issue that you feel passionate about, then you can pay special attention and get the feedback to, like, Dr. Fries and Ms. Guth, like, ahead of time, so that the drafts that we're considering have already incorporated some of what the board wants to see.
And I will send the policies for next month, next week. So you'll have a whole month to look at these. Like, you know, we're trying to kind of balance out the start of the year with new policies, and we've been running a little bit ragged. So once we vote next week on Monday, by the board update on Thursday, we will have the next set of things to Mrs. Guth and the committee.
Right.
And then we'll share it with everybody, so that everybody sees it at the same time.
And I would, yeah, recommend for...
Okay.
Noncommittee members and committee members to look at that schedule, look at the policies, take a look, and make sure if there's anything that is, this is like about how we're all, like, how we operate as a board, like, these are really important.
So, because we are talking about these policies as a full board, and it's a little bit different than our policy meetings in our committee, if anyone's not interested, but is it possible to be kind of like a full board as far as the conversations that are happening from the beginning to now? Because I feel like that would equip some of us around the table that aren't privy to how you got from A to B, to have those discussions a little bit more, have robust discussions.
Well, and it isn't also like having a two-hour meeting and then like another two-hour discussion that repeats. That's not the most efficient way to tackle this work.
Right, right.
So...
I'm going to head out. No, for real. I was just going to text you.
Okay.
Claire, calling me out. I had a fever, come on, I think mid-policy meeting.
Please leave.
Yep.
I was going to wait till you were done. Claire. But it is...
Let us, let us spend some brain power on thinking through, like, the best way to organize that within Sunshine, and, like, maybe what gets handled by committee versus what rises to the level of full board, if it's language versus sentiment. I don't know that anyone is wanting to do this every, I'm really happy we're doing this. I think we can probably handle it more efficiently. So with advance notice, and we can think through how we structure the committee versus full board discussion and what we do to make sure that it's not, because most of us were in the audience for the meeting as well, so then it really is...
And that meeting's public, so we, there's room to reorganize.
Yeah. We will spend some brain power on that, and we'll talk to Erin when she feels better. Okay, but we do have two other policies to discuss.
We do. So I'm going to do the easy one first. That's my opinion, that it is less talkative. I love the talking, like, don't get me wrong, but I think this one will make everybody feel better, that you get a little bit of relief, maybe. All right, 918, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement, will replace the current Title I policy KC. This is, that we're required to do this, to review it every year, kind of like our bullying and harassment, but also, as a result of an audit, they ask that we review it again. So this policy basically talks about Title I and the parent and family engagement. It gives a definition of what a parent or family is. It gives the list of authority as to what the board directs the district in each of its schools to do with the Title I program. It lists quite a few items there, such as conducting outreach to parents and families, having the families help us with our Title I plan. It talks about accessibility to the Title I program. We are not a full Title I school district. We are not, we have two schools currently that fall within Title I, within our, within the school district, so we are more of a, you know, a smaller subset, not a full district. Delegation of Responsibility, it talks about that the superintendent or designee, what their role is with communicating as it relates to Title I. It talks about the guidelines for how Title I programs need to be managed, such as an annual meeting of parents to talk about the programs, making sure that you're talking about how your funds are being used in those meetings. In addition to that, talking about any updates or changes to the Title I program, talking about ways that you can communicate with those families that are within the Title I plan, building capacity for parent and family engagement, coordinating parent and family engagement strategies, annual parent and family engagement policy evaluation, which is this, School Parent and Family Compact, which is a compact between the parents and the school/families that says how you're going to operate and how you're going to communicate with one another. It talks about what Title I funds can be used for. It talks about how, basically how that has to be communicated as well, and then in addition to that, it talks about how we have to document our parent and family engagement practices.
All right. Any questions on policy 918 or comments to share?
Okay, moving on. All right, so our last one is 903, Public Comment in Board Meetings and Recordings. This one aligns to BEDH and BEDJ. I will not miss saying all these letters. Public participation at board meetings and broadcasting recording of board meetings. For this particular policy, it talks about, sorry, it took me off of my page. For this particular policy, it talks about the purpose of public comment in board meetings. It talks about it being an opportunity for district residents and taxpayers to provide comments on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation. It talks about copies of the agenda, which includes a listing of each matter of business that will or may be the subject of deliberation. It talks about providing public comment at the beginning of the meeting on voting items and at the end of the meeting for other items that were not voting meeting, or were not voted on. It talks about that this should take place during the discussion, regular or special meetings. In addition to that, it talks about how, if the board determines that there's not sufficient time at a meeting for public comment, that they can defer it to a different time at the next regular meeting or to a special meeting occurring before the next regular meeting. And then it goes through five items in which public comment can be interrupted or terminated, such as sexual harassment, racial, ethnic, religious, or nationality intimidation, disclosure of confidential personal information about students or staff, speech that's not protected under the First Amendment, speech that constitutes true threat, such as inciting imminent lawless action or subjecting individuals to fear of violence, speech that does not concern matters that may come before the board for deliberation or official action. In addition to that, it talks about sign-in and request to comment, and in this particular session, it says that it basically reserves an opportunity for the public to address the board at a discussion, business, or special meeting, that they can contact the superintendent's office to be placed on the agenda by the Friday before. However, people can walk up and add commentary as well. The next section talks about the, that the presiding officer can make a statement providing direction and establishing expectations for the period of public comment. The next area the PSBA recommends is setting a time limit for public comment. Public comment session at the beginning of the meeting shall be limited to no more than one hour. The second public comment period shall be limited to no more than 30 minutes. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Commenters may not cede their time to other individuals, and no individual may speak more than once on the same topic. And then in addition to that, it talks about when the presiding officer or the district solicitor can interrupt the speaker. You can interrupt an individual to warn the commenter the statement's too lengthy, or that the conduct is in violation of policy. You can interrupt with a warning to terminate the individual's opportunity to comment for these reasons. You can call a recess or adjourn to another time when the individual's conduct is otherwise violation of the policy. You can request an individual to leave this meeting when that person's conduct is disrupting the operation of the meeting. If the individual refuses to leave the meeting, you can request assistance from security or police to remove them, and you can waive the board's rules regarding public comment with the approval of majority of those present in voting. Response to public comment. Purpose of public comment is to allow the board to learn the thoughts of the public prior to deliberation and official action. Although the public period of comment is not a question-and-answer session between the public and the board, the board may direct staff to follow up and address public inquiries in a reasonably prompt manner. And then the next part here talks about our recording and how we record meetings, how they're available on the district cable channels and on the website, and that we may choose to broadcast all or parts of our meetings. In addition to that, with the recordings, we can choose to eliminate parts of the recording that may disclose confidential personal information regarding students or staff, concern matters that may come before the board for deliberation, that do, matters that do not concern matters that will come before the board for deliberation, constitute sexual harassment, racial, ethnic, religious, or national intimidation, are abusive, obscene, disruptive, potentially defamatory, or confidential and privileged, constitute speech that is not protected under the First Amendment, is profane and/or continues or constitutes threats. And that usually is with the board president acting upon advice of the solicitor to make these changes, so that the full transcript or the full broadcast is not including those things that could be harmful to others. And then public comment recorded in board minutes, at this, when people provide public comment, names of their citizen, the name of the citizen and the subject of their testimony is to be considered. And then finally, people can use recording devices and cameras in addition to those that are used as official recording devices. We have the ability to set the expectations for those if we choose.
Thank you. All right, well, it is my understanding from viewing the meeting that Mr. Peterson has some privileged attorney-client information he wants to share with us in executive session regarding some aspects of the policy, so we'll get that scheduled, so we can share that. But barring that information, were there other comments or questions people had on the policy as proposed?
While, you know, we completely understand First Amendment, I do think that this policy gives us an opportunity to be creative about how we go about what we are saying back to our community. So, for example, I was doing some digging over here, so there is a court case about irrelevant or off-topic speech, and I do feel as though we have all sat through comments that were not connected to anything specifically on the agenda. I definitely think that that is an area that we could look at, that could be something that we could embed in what we are, we are doing, as well as, there was one about threatening an abusive speech, obscene and offensive speech, offensive speech, that I do think that we should really start to think about, because it's not about most of us at this board, it's about our students and our community. And I do not want a single student watching a board meeting and feeling any type of way, feeling unsupported, feeling that the board is not seeing them. I also would not want our community to feel that way, although we talk about these things and our vision, our mission, our values, but we are the ones sitting at this table in those moments, and this is the opportunity for us to show everyone else that we can respect your amendment, but you also need to respect our mission, values, and what we believe and who we are as a district.
I agree. Other questions or comments?
I have a question about the use of the recordings. It states that it is district, that it's the property of the district. I've observed that that property of the district, when submitted over the internet, has been spliced, cut, and reproduced on the internet, and I'm wondering if that is a practice that we can take a look at detailing.
Technologically, I don't, I don't know that. Once, once we've released something to YouTube, we, we own the digital media here that, that meetings are recorded on, and we reserve the right to erase those at any time. The, I, I don't know enough about technologically whether, whether there's a way to prevent that being altered.
It's not necessarily altered, but taken out of context and spliced way down so that it is easily misunderstood and misrepresenting the, the sentiment behind the comment when you take most of it out and just have a little sound bite. It can sound quite different than it was.
Sure, and, and, I mean, from a legal perspective, unless it becomes defamatory, you know, someone would be free to take every other word from a board meeting and make their own copy of it when it's, when it's out there in the, in the, in the, in the open domain. And again, I, I'm guessing, once something is, is out in an internet environment, there's, anybody could record it, delete portions of it. Yeah, they're, they, and, and, I mean, theoretically, I guess there could be a copyright claim, but, but the copyright issue... theoretically, I guess there could be a copyright claim, but, but the copyright issue is, you know, if, if it's still clear that it's a recording of our meeting and nobody is claiming that they wrote it, then, you know, there's really not a copyright issue either. And the, 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 the issue that Mrs. Cramble referred to is, is, is what I would want to discuss with you in executive session because there's a lot of relatively recent litigation over the First Amendment component.
I think there were other questions raised about the timing. I know this is the PSBA recommendation, but it seems, first of all, except for when we were voting on school modalities during the pandemic, sort of flipped in terms of the length of time people typically wish to speak with, to us or comment at us. Typically, we don't have much, if any, commentary on actual things we're voting on in the meeting. It's really folks wanting to use that public comment period at the end. So, I would minimum invert those. But I also think our current policy, which just, I do think it is important to add more clarity to the current policy. We have had situations where we've used the policy, which just says we have the ability to limit the time for public comment if we've allowed a reasonable amount of time. It would be good to have some sort of framework for that so that it's not a unilateral decision and there's something defensible in our policy. But I don't know, just having sat through recent, when there's an issue that a lot of community members care about and they come to address us about that, that would allow a time for ten people to speak when sometimes there's like fifty people who've prepared a comment. And I don't know if we can, there used to be a policy somewhere that said, like, the board would adjourn by eleven, so I don't know if we can.
Well, that's, that's in the current policy.
Maybe just have that continue to be the policy. I, I just don't think thirty minutes is fair, just in terms of what we've seen when there is an issue that people want to.
So, Ms. Fleischer, on the, on the timing, again, I'm not planting a flag necessarily, but the time limits for the two comment periods that are in the beginning of the meeting, I, I think that there may be some logistical justification for that when you consider there still has to be a meeting to follow rather than just an open-ended, you know, as many as, you know, especially because, you know, we're giving an hour for those that took the time to register ahead and then the half hour is for, you know, anybody else that might want to weigh in on the things that the board is about to take action on tonight and that there is not necessarily a time limit on the backend piece. I'd like to see the board president indulge with some authority to, you know, call it at a, at some reasonable time, but allowing for special circumstances, you know, that if we have a room full of, you know, fifty students that took the time and energy to be here and to voice their opinion about something that they're passionate about, I want to encourage them to have that level of advocacy in public discourse.
Agreed. So, I think revisiting that and either lengthening the second time period or not having it be time-bound for how long it will be, but saying a reasonable amount of time and unless it's waived, we would adjourn by eleven P M. Seems like open-ended enough.
I'm, I'm more okay with, with that, with having a, you know, adjourned by time than restricting the overall time for public comment. I do believe the three minutes per comment is still good and valid. That's very common in other school boards that I've interacted with. But I think the overall, you know, again, focusing on, these words matter. You know, we do want to encourage public comment. We want people to have the opportunity to speak their mind when they're present or when they're on the phone. And I, I just disagree with putting in the policy that we would restrict that to one hour, thirty minutes. It feels a bit arbitrary to me.
So, yeah, I would, I guess, encourage a revision of that section and then it sounds like we will schedule a follow-up executive session, which we'll try to do by mon, next Monday. But it might mean that we then need to also have this policy just in case there's things that we learned that inform the discussion. So, I would, I would suggest scheduling that and then also having this be in the next month for a second reading and giving ample time for people to take in that information, react to it, and provide feedback to Ms. Guth and Dr. Freeze about how they feel about what they learned.
Yeah, I, I would, I would sugge, the, 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 the legal issues are pretty complex and we, we, even if we have a thorough executive session and reach a consensus, there won't be time to finalize language and have it voted on next week.
Yeah, I know. And we have a policy that will stay in place until that policy, so. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
So, we're going to effectively, requires official action table?
No, because I think this, we're moving policies forward or not. So, we're just not going to move that one forward for a vote.
Table, the, the board can just agree that we're proceeding on everything except those two.
Okay, cool.
All right. Nine fifty-three, uh, now we're getting into like finance.
We're running up to the eleven o'clock deadline here.
I know.
Can we make that ten o'clock?
Sorry, I'm very strictly adhering to policy. You'll just all hear my stomach swelling, it's great. So, agenda item, finance agenda item A is related to the treasurer's report for August as well as the year-end projections as of August thirty-first, which we said we would provide when we had better information after the audit got underway.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Conley to take us through the finance items.
She's been waiting patiently.
Um, yes, treasurer's report is for August twenty twenty-four is a list of our, our disbursements and cash transactions for various accounts for the district, general fund, payroll, capital projects, real estate, and capitated fund. As far as the projection, this projection is as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It, we are now sitting at a deficit of two million, three hundred and one thousand and sixty dollars. That is considerably more than the last projection that we discussed.
At the, at the August meeting, and a lot of bills came through, which were not on purchase orders and we didn't really know they were out there. So, as part of our procedures for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, every disbursement is going to be on a purchase order if it's under a contract or with a vendor. We have to have knowledge of the encumprances as we go through the year. This number is not a final number. The auditors are coming to the office next week, they will be here all five days. And through the audit process, they will have several transactions that will, that could increase or lower that number. But I think it's important that the board understands that the, as of right now, the structural deficit in that twenty-three, twenty-four budget is sitting at two point three million dollars. And that if that is that number, it will be taken out of fund balance, which brings us to a dangerously low number.
When, when will we know?
More?
Yeah.
I'm hoping by the end of next week that the auditors can speak to me and probably Dr. Freeze about some transactions on the general ledger that they're questioning from the past audit that would bring, could change things on our, you know, on the, on the books. And then we could maybe report out at the October meeting. I think they should report out at the October meeting. They, these are going to be their numbers, it might not be official, but they could probably present their methodology and the, the funds that they're moving around.
I think it's important to note that we're asking them to look at past practice because we want to make sure that we have accurate information moving forward because we've been operating in a deficit in terms of like, you know, what happened pre-February of this year, if that makes sense. And they have been fantastic partners in the first month because their willingness to really dig in and to help us. So, we're very appreciative of that. And I think, too, the biggest impact that we had on this past year's budget was things like the number of tax refunds and the amount of money that we paid out was far extended what we thought it would be. The number of people that, or the, the cost of the extra support that we had in place last year through contracted services continued. It's not like you're just going to stop it in the middle of the year and you have to continue to pay those people. And then in addition to that, there was an expectation that we would end the school year with a higher amount of revenue than we actually ended out. And that took a big chunk out as well, I think it was close to nine hundred thousand dollars that we didn't, we didn't see as a revenue source. All in all, you know, for me, this is disappointing because we tried. And in the areas that we could make an impact, we did. You know, the areas of things like supplies and things that we could control. But you can't stop a moving system when you're trying to support kids when the funding wasn't there to begin with, but it was assumed to be there because that's how we operate the school district. I guess would be the best way to put it. It's not three point three. That's what I have to tell myself because that's where we thought we would be when we reported back in January and February. It's not three point three. And we know more now and we will do better.
I guess, I do have a question about, so it says here that at, at the end of July, our actual salary expenditures were fifty million dollars. And we're expecting that as of the end of August, we're projecting that that would go up another three and a half million dollars, which is a big, so is that like a typical monthly, like, is it typical to fluctuate that much in a month?
No.
So, how is it fluctuating that much, I guess? How, how, what salaries are we responsible for that are as of, like, prior year salaries that haven't been paid out by July thirty-first that we would have to pay out by August?
Well, they get paid for twelve months and then in addition to that, it's the E S Y. That gets paid on last year's budget, it's not the current year. So, even though June thirtieth is the end of our fiscal year, that programming goes through the summer and the, the paychecks for individuals also do.
So, is there a reason why E S Y is budgeted for the prior fiscal year when it's happening in the current fiscal year?
I think it's just because it's the end of the year. It's a part, the E S Y is a continuation of your current year and your current goals.
Okay, I mean, but the expense, it seems to me like we should budget for it for the year. But either way, it, that seems like a big jump where we actually spent fifty, fifty point seven million and we think that we're actually going to spend fifty-four point three to close out the year.
Are you referencing the August report, which was month ending July thirty-first?
So, I'm referencing the year-to-date actual expenditures as of July thirty-first, which are under budget and that we think we're going to have, by the end of August, we will have paid out an additional.
I don't think that's accurate. This, that, that third column that we're looking at is that, that date.
Okay.
I'm, just give me one moment here.
Well, the actual expenditures were under budget and the projected final one month later is still, is still under budget.
Yeah, but it's just a big jump in a month for such a significant portion of the.
Well, I think it's, that third column's wrong. I'm looking at the, I'm not in the board report, but we, I thought we reported it on July thirty-first. It, the, the actuals as of June thirtieth was forty-six, eight seventy-two and we were looking at a projected of fifty-four, three ninety-three. So, the teachers are, and all the ten-month employees are paid over twelve months. So, the accrual over July and August is built into that fifty-four million.
Okay.
So, what really jumped is the benefits.
Yeah.
I don't think the benefits were projected. I think the project, the benefit projection was low back in May. That is really where we saw a half a million dollars higher than what we projected the, the meeting before. The next line is contracted services, that would be all the tuition and other charter school expenditures, all coming in at the end of the year.
And, and so the May projections didn't account for almost a million dollars of additional expenses that were not anticipated, I guess?
I don't know that they weren't anticipated, we didn't experience it yet, so we didn't know. So, we were predicting off of bad data. I mean, and all of this is like more or less potential. I mean, the best way to say it is like we're guessing because if you remember, things weren't in the right line items. And in addition to that, we found out that we paid bills from last year. We paid, paid bills from twenty-two, twenty-three on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget because they were sitting on somebody's desk waiting to be paid. That wasn't accounted for when we went back and did like the, the preview. Look, I, I don't know how to say this anymore, like frankly, but like, we don't, up until this current year where we've been kind of making sure transfers are being made and making sure the public is clear on how we're using our funds, that hadn't been happening, so you go into it with the assumptions based upon the kids that you have. But for instance, like, there was no budget for those extra staff, contracted staff. There was no budget for that. So, anything that we paid to them, for the most part, was paid out of whatever because there was no contracted services budget, even though there was a belief and there was a statement that there was when the budget was passed, that actually there wasn't. So, we're kind of living with past decisions that are disappointing.
And it's important to point out that those decisions from a board's standpoint were made without. were made without accurate information. So if this is a surprise to the superintendent, this is a surprise to the board.
Well, it's a surprise to the new superintendent. So I want to be very clear that like, we are doing better and we've changed our practices. We are not perfect. We're not going to be perfect, sadly. I wish that I could tell you every single penny of everything that we're, you know, did this past year and that, that's going to be accurate moving forward. Like, we have to live it, sadly, you know? And it's not, it's not enjoyable. There's nothing enjoyable about delivering bad news or telling people that we'll be spending even less this year to make sure that we're making up for last year, for instance. But we have to have these discussions. We have to be honest, which I'm appreciative that all of you are on board for that because we don't want to move forward not providing accurate information to the board and we don't want to move forward with like hiding things from the public, right? It's much easier for us to be super transparent about it, in my opinion.
Well, and I mean, I'm assuming we'll see this next month when we see the audit, but having been two point three million dollars over budget and having to pay those bills anyway, do we know or are we projecting where the unassigned fund balance is currently?
Well, the auditors will verify that, but it will be, for structural deficit right now is two point three million and if no other transactions occur. What I mean by transactions and what they're going to do is they're, they're reviewing right now and they're combing through, usually it, it happens in June and July of, of each year, the bookends of the, of the fiscal year and what should be accounted for in each year.
Yeah, so the subsequent transactions that are going to be booked to last year's budget.
They might say, hey, there's a tuition bill in here and we think it's for twenty-four, twenty-five. They're going to pull that out and that's going to bring that two point three million dollars down. Or they might say, hey, you booked that in twenty-four, twenty-five. It needs to be accounted for in twenty-three, twenty-four, which would bring it up. And, you know, we did the best we could to go through all those transactions that they are hitting the correct year, but through their lens, they, they might be having some discussions with us. So I would have to look up to see where our current fund balance is, but I think liquid unassigned fund balance is around five million. It'll be around two million dollars less.
Is this a report that we'll get each month, the projections?
We've been talking about whether or not giving it each month is actually accurate because it's take, it takes over a month after the month ends to actually do projections, right? It's not the month ends and all of a sudden we have everything. We have to wait for checks to come in, for things to balance, for deposits to go through. I think that we can probably, we were talking about doing actuals.
You could do actuals, yes.
And then having the projected be something that is more or less like quarterly because the information would be more valid than doing month to month. Month to month is very challenging, not because we're not willing to do the work, but it is something, sometimes things that you put out at July one don't get cashed until, you know, the end of the month and then it's missed and then it looks like it was omitted, but really it wasn't.
So with the twenty-four, twenty-five budget that we put so much time and effort in and did zero-based budgeting, if we carry all that through, we should be on, on course for a balanced, for, for some kind of, you know, it won't be two million in, in June of twenty twenty-five. But what will happen is I think we need to tell the board when something happens. If, for example, we have a family move in who's in a charter school and four of those kids are in a charter school, we would report out to the board, they're at X charter school. This is unanticipated and this is the cost. And right now, for Dr. Freeze putting together an analysis of where are we with the P C A budget? Because we haven't filled those positions. So how is that going to impact the budget? There's also lots of procedures in place and there's been a lot of talk among the staff that they don't understand the procedures. And we've been trying to meet with them to explain. Everything is going through an approval process. And this is not, this is a three-tier hierarchy approval process. Principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and then to the business office to create the purchase order. So no more employee reimbursement because it was just easier to do it that way. Can't do that. We have to have a purchase order. When a purchase order is made on this, on the general ledger, it encumbers the money so that it can't be spent on other things. So that's why it's so important. And I think our staff is, once they understand the process and why we're doing it, they, there's a lot more support for it. But it is taking a little bit longer to get things to the schools, to the classrooms because of this process. It shouldn't be taking weeks. It might take a day if everyone is checking the approval queue. And there are some things that we have definitely stopped. You know, I've always done it this way. Why can't I do it? Because it wasn't budgeted and we, and we're looking at everything. There is impossible on this system to have a negative. There has to be an override. And someone in the finance department, such as me or the accounting specialist, has to override it. So you are going to see a lot of budget transfers. And a budget transfer isn't a way to spend all my money. It has to be justified. I need this now because this didn't happen. It's not going to be a matter of, I'm going to get this now because I didn't need all this and it's in my budget. It really has to be justified as a required and necessary thing for the, for the program.
Thank you. So if I'm understanding you correctly, our next item on our agenda is the monthly list of bills. And so if I'm understanding correctly, I was going to ask you, like, has everything on this list been previously budgeted? But it sounds like that may not be the case if it wasn't, if there wasn't a purchase order.
No, not moving forward. We're saying that was our problem in the past is that people held on, people ordered things and then worried about paying for it later. We fixed that. That's not an issue. That was something that we started working on in February of last year because we were, I forget what the technical term is it, but basically, I call you, I have done business with you for ten decades. You send me my product and then I get a bill, but we don't do a purchase order for it. And so we stopped that so that these items that you see are items that we have budgeted for because there wasn't that system in the past. We wanted it and we got it. We don't have the capacity to want something and get it. And we've said this now for eight months. And I think that the most challenging thing is, is that this is not a twenty-three, twenty-four issue. This is for the rest of eternity that we're going to have this process because we need to create budgets that we stick to. We can't create budgets that we then add two million dollars to it. And that has been our practice, you know, I mean, for the last like four or five years. We don't want to be that way. So we will come across as being difficult as an administration because we are trying to do better so that we can keep our employees and that we can continue operating as a school district. If people are upset by that, I'm sorry, but we have to have rules and expectations and regulations. And if it takes an extra day to approve a purchase, it's for the right reason. It's not because we're trying to be cheap or not to allow people to buy things or be difficult. It's because we need procedures and processes in place to operate as a school district and to be fiscally responsible.
And if that account number does not have the funding, it's.
Denied.
It's, it's non-sufficient funds. It will not be processed. The August bills, there are still lingering twenty-three, twenty-four payments that are part of the August list of bills. Twenty-three, twenty-four has officially been closed. So if there's any transactions that occur on twenty-three, twenty-four, it will be through an auditor's journal entry. So to go back to the two, two point three million, that is a real number.
So I think what would be helpful for me, moving forward, is we, we are where we are. We've paid what we've paid and we're going to get a full accounting, a fuller accounting next month from the auditors directly of where we stand. But is hearing more on what is the annual schedule of reporting that makes sense that would get the board and the public the data we need. That's not just more information, but that is good information and the right information. So we know we see the monthly balance sheet. We know we see the list of bills. We know we see these, you know, transfers, but this budget versus actual report and the projections, we've been hearing, well, it's bad data, it's bad data. So A, how do we clean up the data? And then B, like, what is the correct cycle that we should be looking at, not just our actual expenditures versus budget and what percentage we are to budget and what the variance is, which is real information we can have? But looking at projections and having some confidence as a board and as the public in those projections, because so far for five years, we haven't been able to have confidence in those projections. So they're not useful data at this point. I'd rather be dealing in actuals and, you know, next month, three months through the year, are we twenty-five percent about, like, where are we after our quarter? But having that laid-out plan and also I know that there are already things that have occurred, like our state funding, perhaps unanticipated real estate refunds. And so us understanding not just that we're sticking to the zero-sum budget, but how have we further reduced to meet the realities of the reduction in funding? Because otherwise we would be in a deficit since it was a budget that was in balance. So hearing more about that plan, even as we're in these first few months of the year where we know that already our budget is not going, we're not going to hit the revenue targets. Because of the state. So what are, what are we doing to not just hold people to the budget, but how have we adjusted the budget to meet those realities? So we're not ending up in a deficit situation would be helpful information as well.
Yep, and we'll present that next month.
Okay. Uh, other questions on the treasurer's report and the expenditure report? We already sort of started discussing the list of bills.
The monthly list of bills reflects checks authorized to be drawn between August twenty, twenty twenty-four and August thirty, twenty twenty-four. All checks have been reviewed by the administration. The superintendent recommends approval of this list.
Are all of the items on this list for August being drawn from the twenty-four, twenty-five budget or are any of these still holdovers from the twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
There's a few twenty-three, twenty-four pulled into here.
And when can we anticipate that's being finalized? No more bills.
The twenty-three, twenty-four ledger is closed. The only time you, only the auditors will be doing journal entries to move transactions, expense and revenues onto that, onto the ledger now. So it's, it's done as far as I'm concerned. So the next list of bills will only be for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Can you, can you just explain that a bit more? Journal ledgers for the previous?
Okay. Our fiscal year is July one through June thirtieth, but it doesn't, you know, the business office doesn't stop paying the invoices from the prior year on June thirtieth. I wish we could. We can't even get, we don't even have, have all of them in by July thirty-first. This year, we made a concerted effort and put a lot of pressure on the departments to get all of your invoicing in ASAP. We actually did give them a deadline of July thirty-first. So call your vendors, call your, you know, I'm just going to, it, it's nothing to do with Dr. Schuman, but A I U has an invoicing cycle and it's, it doesn't necessarily meet July thirty-first. So we had to call them and say, have you invoiced us for everything? We've got two English as a second language invoices in in early August. Each was two hundred thousand dollars. So those are being processed in August, but they're being accounted for in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year or on the, that general ledger. So we have one set of books, but two databases open at one time at, over the summer. Twenty-three, twenty-four is closing and twenty-four, twenty-five is open. So to answer your question, on the list of bills, there is some co-mingling of twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five invoices that are being paid. You will not see that again, only if the auditor does a journal entry, which they will explain. There's always journal entries from an auditor to close the books, but if there's anything major, they'll explain that in their presentation.
And, and I don't think we need to change this for right now unless it's super simple, but maybe for August and September, lists of bills moving forward, we would separate it out so that we have an understanding of what we're looking at as prior year and what we're looking at as current year. And Todd, I think the closing of the books means like, the business office here is not going to enter any more transactions for twenty-three, twenty-four, but the auditors could provide a transaction, which is a journal entry, which they would have to enter as that. But right now, no, no one at the staff level can determine that, that needs to happen. Only the external audit firm can determine that either money coming in or money going out should be included in that general ledger account versus the current year.
I'm appreciative that the auditors are with us presently in September, that we're, this is not a surprise that we learn in December when the auditor's report comes out, but that there being this change in firm has allowed us to have some visibility into the process on a monthly level that did not, did not exist before. As, as a board member acting ethically, I want to only approve bills that are budgeted for. And I realize that that is impossible if we're still paying on last year's bills. It's very hard to, I, I don't know what some of these things cost or should cost. I trust that when it reaches my eyes, that it's the right number and that it's been budgeted for and accounted for. And I guess that's where we hold the administration accountable for producing over time. I realize we don't have them from before, but over time, we need to be able to trust that these numbers are in our ability to pay before and at the time that we're voting for them.
So anything for twenty-four, twenty-five has been vetted, as Mrs. Conley stated. Principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent and the finance office for budget, that it's budgeted for. If it's not budgeted for, we send a reply that says, no, you're not going to get this. So I want to be very clear. We're not out there saying, what would you like to buy? Let's do it. Or send it to me so I can tell you no. We've been very clear with people that if you didn't budget for it, you're not getting it because we, we do not have the capacity to just pay for whatever we want. And is that going to upset people? Yes, it'll probably upset people at this table because we're going to be saying no to things that people have historically, maybe not budgeted for, but have asked for. We don't have the capacity to add to.
We don't have the capacity to add to what we pay for. And that's why this is like a fresh year. It's been a really hard month. I'll just be very honest with you because we don't wanna disappoint the people that are doing the work either. But we have to because we have to stick to a budget. And it's hard. It's gonna be hard and it's gonna continue to be hard.
And there were no budgetary transfers on the agenda. Does that mean that there were none next?
There was none. There's none for this month.
So the, anything in the current year was in the budget and not paid for by transferring funds from other accounts?
That's correct. If it's not here as a, as a, um, transfer, then we, it was there, it was budgeted for and we paid for it.
Other questions on the monthly list of bills?
Yeah, it's, it's more of a statement. We, we talked a little bit earlier, like four hours ago or so about, um. Board advocacy and, you know, I, it's more of a comment for us that, you know, this is a good opportunity for us to think about. This budget issue in terms of revenue at the state level. Um, you know, we can start, we need to be thinking about, yes, this year revenues have been determined, the budget's been set. But that whole cycle is gonna start again very soon and, you know, we should be getting out in front of that and not waiting. Certainly not waiting till, you know, March, April, when we're really having heavy budget conversations. But, you know, now's the time for us to, you know, build on those relationships and try to advocate for more funding in the state. You know, we've got state issues, we have county issues. Um, and to me, this is an all hands on deck issue and this is a space where we can contribute in a meaningful way. Um, you know, we've got the administration focused on, you know, day-to-day budgeting, approval processes. Um, we can be out there advocating and fighting for more funding for our school, for the district, for our students.
And I agree. And I hope that everyone joins in this process because I have to say that, we're gonna talk about this next month. But a passion project of mine is now actually informing the state about how harmful their cycle is. And how a school district that saw a significant increase in special education students. Received less money for receiving more students than we ever have been before. And you can't tell me that, oh, this is a wealthy community. We still have to service kids. And when there's no money for that, it's really challenging to pick and choose what you're going to do. And that is our, that is our reality. Um, our county's inability to change. The CLR outcome, the common level ratio outcome by not forcing a reassessment. If this continues and we're down to twenty percent of the value on a home. Uh, when I tell you that it will, it'll wipe us out because that is where the majority of our funding comes from. And like, it is very emotional because there's only so much that you can control. And our community probably doesn't even know what the impact is on us. Because it's never been a topic for us before, but the common level ratio wasn't a topic either for us in the past. But common level ratio and the funding procedures of the state is, is very, very harmful to us. Because though we will see an increase in ELL learners, we've seen an increase in special education students. We've not seen a comparable increase in the per student, um, income that we're getting from the state. And that's gonna hurt us significantly if we continue to grow. And my prediction is we will continue to grow because people wanna bring their children to our district and we wanna service them.
I'm wondering, um, since we are here for students and there's people around the table, as you mentioned, that might be upset, they're not getting what they want. What are the, are the conversation, are there conversations having, are, are you having conversations, can I speak at ten o'clock at night? About, um, thinking outside the box and putting, pooling sources together. You know, whether we're talking about, you know, for, for the, for the things that you're not able, that haven't been previously budgeted for. That people are coming and asking you for some things, it's like, okay, no, we just can't do that this year. Versus, okay, is someone else thinking about that? Or are we looking at where we are spending money? How can we partner? You know, like what, are there conversations happening at that high level of, um, creative, out of the box thinking of doing more with less? As we always try to do.
I mean, we're doing more with less significantly. When we present the human resources report next week, it's gonna be very clear. That we made substantial impact last year. And so now we're at the point where the impact is going to actually affect us. And so like, are we being creative? Yes, we're applying for grants. We're looking for other opportunities for funding. To be able to do the things that we wanna be able to do. Um, but there's not millions of dollars that exist out there for school districts like ours sadly. And in terms of being creative, I mean, the system we put in place this year to be able to balance the budget. I don't know how we pulled it off. I'm gonna be very, very honest. I mean, we were able to take a look at our staff, look at who was going to be out on a leave. Reduce our teaching staff by not having long-term subs. So we weren't paying two different people for benefits. And shift them into those roles and they were willing to do it. It's an impact of about thirty people. That's a significant impact, right? Like we, we've done the kind of like creative curtailing of costs. We have fixed costs. We have to transport, um, we have to provide educational services to students. We have to pay our bonds. We have to pay our employees and we have to play, pay their benefits. The fixed costs for us are eighty-five percent of our budget. That fifteen, we, and we affected that. We did impact that. The fifteen percent that's left, we've significantly impacted that too. The problem is, is that our revenue is not keeping up with the typical four to five percent increase in costs. Because just like we pay more for bread and milk or whatever it is that we're buying. I, I don't drink milk, but maybe bread. I don't really eat bread either, but snacks, I don't know. But just like that's increasing, for us as a school district, we're seeing the same increases. You know, like the biggest news story this week was like your increase in your water bill, right? It's significant. We're getting that, but we're taking it on a much higher level with ten buildings. You know, that maybe the year before it was fifteen percent less that you paid for water and now it's fifteen percent more. Instead of your typical two percent raise. Things are just more costly.
Yeah. And when the major source of funding of local real estate taxes is unstable because of the CLR issue. And then the state funding, um, which is maybe the second highest source. Also came in less than what they had proposed. It, it, it is. But what I'm, what I would appreciate and I hear that we're gonna hear it next month is. Um, just doing what we planned to do in May even is not enough. Because we know that we have less than what we planned to have in May. So, um. You know, just staying on top of that and advocating. Um, I know Dr. Fries has done a fair bit of advocating at the state and county level. And through other opportunities that have come up, like the leadership Pittsburgh cohort. To really inform people and it, it, talk about the impact of the common level ratio on our local real estate taxes. But we all have a part, part to play in that, so.
To piggyback really quickly off of Mrs. Gelman, there are some other things that are being thought about creatively. Um, we'll talk about it next week because it's part of my board report. However, um, I have a meeting with commissioners, some other stakeholders within municipality, um, that are wanting to come to the table. To facilitate and bridge that gap for us. So hopefully we can get some things moving here very shortly. So. Stay tuned for next week.
Mrs. Fleischer, you asked me about the fund balance or on the side of fund balance as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Is four million, six hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars. So if this budget deficit indeed does come in at two point three, that would be wiped out by fifty percent.
That was what I thought I recalled. All right. Moving on to the list of tax refunds for August twenty twenty-four.
The list of tax refund totals, twenty thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-four cents for eleven refunds for August twenty twenty-four. The list has been reviewed by the solicitor's office, which recommends approval. The list is recommended for approval by the superintendent.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, these addresses are not all Mount Lebanon addresses. It's that the owner of the property's, uh, business address?
Right.
Yeah?
It's where the, it's where the tax bills go.
And for some of these, we're seeing multiple, like three different refunds for three different tax years. Or two different refunds for two different tax years for some of the addresses, um, as well. So it's eleven refunds, but it is not on eleven separate properties. It's on half a dozen properties.
And if you wanna see sort of the impact of the CLR, if you look at the first one. You, you can see how the refunds increase. That tracks directly the dropping level of the common level ratio. So stated differently, if the common level ratio had dropped in twenty twenty-two, but then stopped dropping. Then all three refunds would have been that lower first of all.
Other questions or comments on?
I guess in simple terms, here's twenty thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars that we have to pay out to property owners. That we can't spend on student services. That's the simplest way to say it.
Correct. All right. Uh, item D, Southwest Allegheny County Tax Collection District Confidentiality Agreement and Authorization.
The board is asked to approve the Southwest Allegheny County Tax Collection District Confidentiality Agreement and Authorization. With Jordan Tax Service as tax officer of the Southwest Allegheny County Tax Collection District. The superintendent recommends approval of this agreement.
Is this a new agreement?
No, it's just revised with, um, new delegate and alternate names. And every time there's a change, they want the board to approve the new contract or a contract with Jordan Tax Service. Who collects our earned income tax. Um, this agreement is required when there is a change in the voting delegate and the alternate. Jordan is the appointed tax collector for earned income tax for the Southwest County, Allegheny County Tax Collection District. Which Mount Lebanon School District is a part of. This confidentiality agreement serves as an agreement between Jordan and the district. And then the next item is appointment of the delegate and her alternate. And this will be the first time in fifteen years that somebody that works here is serving as a voting body. Um, on this.
Correct.
Panel board, whatever you wanna call it.
All right. Questions or comments on items D and E? Congratulations. Sounds fun.
It's four meetings a year and there's not much action, but it's required. So our next item is the personnel report.
Yeah.
Um, and here you will see the personnel report with assignment. Assignment of probationary employees, change in assignment, change in assignment for probationary employees. Um, leaves of absence, resignations, um, teachers that have earned tenure and then for information only.
Questions or comments on the personnel report? I, I guess, I know it's ten forty-one. Um, I know we talked last month about the openings for personal care assistant. Um, I see that there's at least one, um, probationary assignment of a personal care assistant. Are we making, um?
We've added four or five new employees since last year. Um, two started last week, two started this week. Um, we're continuing to interview. We've had a huge number, I mean, I'm saying huge because it felt huge. Number of, um, parents that have signed up to substitute because of word of mouth. And I would like to publicly acknowledge them for their willingness to help us. Um, because it, it, it will make a difference for us. And we've had quite a few people that once they got used to the position, that they are taking substitute roles as well to support the classrooms. But we will be continuing to hire for these roles every day of every month of every year. Because it's a rotating cycle. That sadly, that's the, the position. And we are very committed to continuing to find people. You may notice that there are signs that are posted. We've been advertising in different ways. Um, on all of my walks to school this year, I've been talking about opportunities. Um, anytime somebody looks at me and I think that they might be interested, I tell them that. As does everyone else sitting at this table. Dr. Schuman is fantastic at recruiting. She's done a great job too. So I think that, um, you know, get the word out that we're hiring and we will continue to hire. And there will never be a time when we're not hiring.
I mean, that could be one of the prizes at How Sunny Funny Fair is you get appointed. Personal care assistant. Um, other questions or comments on personnel? All right. And then also under human resources.
So there's the, um, the board is asked to cast their vote for the PSBA endorsed officer candidates. Um, just like last year, there is only one candidate per spot that's open. And their bios are included in this document for your consideration.
Has anyone from our board ever been in one of those positions?
From Mount Lebanon? Yes.
From Mount Lebanon, yeah.
During my tenure, but in previous years. If it's something that anyone is interested in. I know people from the Pittsburgh area, um, have served. Uh, I'm happy to make introductions of folks who've been in leadership positions, just to learn more about it. But reach out and happy to make that connection. Other questions or comments? All right, curriculum and instruction?
Dr. Schuman's gonna cover A through E and Dr. Davis is gonna cover F and G.
So for A through C, it's the same provider. However, there are different locations. So these are specific agreements for students. This is a request for letter A for the board to approve an agreement with the Watson Institute Education Center. For the placement of students with special education needs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Annual cost of the service will not exceed sixty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight per student anticipated for eight students. The superintendent recommends approval of this agreement.
Letter? Do we wanna read through A through C and then we can?
Yeah, sure. Letter B, um, this is a request for the board to approve an agreement with the Watson Institute Social Center for Academic Achievement. Wiskas Sharpsburg for the placement of students with special education needs for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. The district anticipates the attendance of one part-time student at a cost not to exceed forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-five cents. The superintendent recommends approval of this agreement. For letter C, this is a request for the board to approve an agreement with the Watson Institute Social Center for Academic Achievement. Wiskas South for the placement of students with special education needs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The district anticipates the attendance of one part-time student at a cost not to exceed forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-five cents. And one full-time student at a cost not to exceed fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The superintendent recommends approval of this agreement.
Questions or comments on the agreements with the Watson Institutes? Item D?
Yep, for letter D, the board is asked to approve an agreement with Southwood Children's Behavioral Health Care for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to allow students who are hospitalized at the Southwood facility to receive educational services during their stay. The district agrees to compensate Southwood ninety dollars per day, inclusive of administration and preparation time. The Superintendent recommends approval of this contract.
Questions or comments on this agreement?
And letter E, the board is asked to approve an agreement with independent contractor Danielle Campbell for the provision of comprehensive speech and language evaluations in Spanish and English to determine qualification for specially-designed instruction. The cost of the service is fifteen hundred per each bilingual evaluation completed, which includes a report in English and a hundred dollars per each additional pragmatic language assessment rating scale. Mileage will be reimbursed at a standard IRS mileage rate, round trip from the contractor's home. Services are anticipated for one student. The Superintendent approves this agreement.
Questions or comments? Items F and G, Dr. Davis?
So, good evening. Uh, the last two items are student trips. Uh, so, uh, F is a request by the half uh, High School Athletic Department. Uh, is requesting permission for our high school boys' basketball team to travel to Hilton Head, South Carolina for the Hilton Head High School Holiday Tournament from December nineteenth to the twenty-third of twenty twenty-four. Uh, students will miss two days of school, and the basketball boosters club is covering the cost of the trip. Uh, Superintendent is recommending approval of this trip.
Questions or comments? Item G, please?
And the other trip is the High School Athletic Department is requesting permission for our high school JV and varsity softball teams to travel to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee for the spring training tournament from March twelfth to the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Students will miss two days of school, and the booster club and the families are covering the cost of the trip, and the super- Superintendent is recommending approval of this student trip as well.
All right, questions or comments on the trip? Um, we are now accepting questions or comments from residents. This public comment period is open to residents and taxpayers regarding matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are maybe before the board. All commenters should begin by stating their name. Comments are limited to three minutes, and we'll notify commenters when their time has expired. Questions requiring follow-up will be referred to the administration for a later response. Comments by public participants are their own and should not be assumed to be the statements of the district. The Mount Lebanon School District is committed to providing a safe, inclusive and welcoming school environment that recognizes and celebrates the diverse identities within our community, so everyone feels a sense of belonging. Is there anyone online who wishes to offer comment? There is no one in the audience. Um, I'd like to announce upcoming public meeting on Monday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty PM here in the uh high school room to do D two oh five and via Zoom. Can I have a motion to adjourn?